It's officially called this Pocahontas Public School Board of Education meeting for Monday October 11th. In order, would you please rise and join me for the backseat?
Hi, glad to be here.
I'm the president of the Institute of Flight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great.
Father, thank you for all the blessings you bestow on us each and every day. We so appreciate your guidance and support when things do not go our way. You may not act in ways we understand, but we know you are always with us. Please be with our health care workers, our first responders, teachers, city, state, national leaders as they fight to keep us safe from diseases, war, disasters, and from each other. There are no easy answers and none without hard work, dedication, and love for humanity. Be with our men and women of the armed forces as they fight and serve to protect us in this great country of ours. We appreciate all that they do. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Can you see any places?
Jane Caldwell.
Dr. Kincaid.
Here.
Mr. Lisa. Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Trufel, President of the Assembly.
We do have a course and the meeting will become official. Next item of business is recognitions. The President of the Board will preside over the recognition of the October Employee of the Month in the Rings of Education for the following. The first one is the Certified Employee of the Month, Mary James Pohai Techco.
Fortunately, I get to do this every now and then, and I'm pleased to do it this evening. Employee of the Month, Certified Employee of the Month is Mary James. In recognition of exemplary service at Pocahontas Public Schools for going above and beyond the call of duty in helping faculty and staff better serve the needs of the district's students by creating online coursework and accessibility to the coursework throughout the district during challenging times. Pocahontas Public Schools hereby awards Mary James with the Certified Employee of the Month for September 2020.
Yay!
Maybe look behind you, there's a picture of her.
I did, sorry.
Okay. That will be the Support Employee of the Month, Kyle Alvey, the District Courier.
Kyle Alvey works in our maintenance department. And we are proud to recognize Kyle as the October Employee of the Month. Kyle is the District Courier for the district and is responsible for getting the vast amounts of inter-district mail to the right person. Kyle is a great worker and willing to help with anything when asked. Kyle always has a joke or two to put a smile on your face regardless of how crazy he gets. Kyle makes sure district mail is delivered as recent destination in a timely manner. And I want to add too that you never know what kind of talents lie beneath whenever you hire somebody. He comes in as a district mail carrier, but he has got lots of talents in regards to music and sound. He's had a lot of career achievements in that area, so he's been very helpful in the district for that too.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kyle.
That's going to be the Friend of Education, which is the Pocahontas City Aviation Board.
This is the award Pocahontas City Aviation. East Middle School would like to thank Bruce Everly and the Pocahontas City Aviation Foundation. This group of individuals take their personal time to host a fly-in breakfast fundraiser. The money they raise provides many things for education in the community, such as dividing up the money earned from fly-ins and create scholarships for aeronautics and assist students with flying lessons, host a summer flight academy for the Pocahontas City students, and assist school groups and organizations in Pocahontas City with financial contributions. East Middle School is a recipient of some of their hard work and financial support. Their financial assistance has helped purchase personal items and necessities for students. It made it possible for East to purchase items students would not normally have been able to afford. Thank you, Pocahontas City Aviation Foundation. From the students and faculty of East Middle School, you are true models of a Wildcat way. Thank you for supporting Team Pocahontas.
Something I'd add, if y'all haven't been out to the monthly fly-in yacht go, it is really a good deal. Dawson, who's not here tonight, is involved with it. Bruce Everly been involved from the very first one. It's a good breakfast out there. I think it's the first Saturday of every month. It's a neat deal. That's gone agenda as public comment. I assume we'll have it on tape. We'll skip right over that and we'll go to Betsy Easley, report for the potential board discussion on the ACT testing for the spring of 2021.
Betsy, here's the clicker.
Evening. I'm here to talk to you about the selection of the ACT. As Pohai's junior test to qualify for graduation, the state requires that we choose between ACT and SAT. And every year, we meet with parents and students to discuss the choice that we're making, why we're making it, and what benefit it has to them. We meet with a group of parents, teachers, and students and talk about the testing plan that we have devised. And again, this year, we are going to go with the ACT. That's been our standard of choice. These bullet points that you're seeing on the board are some of the things that we talked about in the committee, about why we wanted to choose the ACT. We've been using ACT college and career readiness standards for years along with, well, back when it was passed, we've been along with our Oklahoma academic standards. We have invested in an ACT prep course for many years. I think we probably had it for at least 15 years. And we still have that today. We set up our testing program to start at the high school in the ninth grade with the pre-ACT 9, continues in the sophomore year with the pre-ACT, and then obviously all of our juniors take the junior ACT. So we have a testing program that's really cohesive and is really preparing our kids to do the best they can on that junior ACT and any other ACTs that they may take outside of that one for college entrance. We also, last year, the district purchased ACT Online Prep, ACT's software test preparations on there. All of the juniors in our district have access to that, and it has proved to be very useful for the limited time we were able to use it last year. We're going to start it earlier this year. In fact, we'll probably start next week sometime, getting kids into that practice to give them a little longer leave time to get ahead of that test. Everyone on the committee and all the students agreed that we should do the ACT. We sent out a survey as a follow-up with these points of discussion to junior parents and junior students, and I don't think we got a single response back that disagreed with our ACT choice. Mostly in Oklahoma and in non-surrounding states, most colleges will accept the ACT. If kids are going to go to colleges on the east coast or the west coast or some of those Ivy League colleges, they may have to take the SAT for entrance, but so far, we've been communicating with kids if they need to do that. And they are able to, of course, take the SAT, and there's some commonalities. You know, the prep helps both ways. Any questions?
Yes, and this may be taken from Terry's. It looks like for 2019 and 2020 that we really didn't hit the desired state of any category on ACT tests.
In 1920, for last year?
Yeah.
Yes.
We didn't take it last year.
We didn't take it last year.
No, I wrote in there that we didn't take any testing. There was like a note that said there was no testing.
Speak up when we have a hard time hearing you.
On that plan, there's been a note downloaded that says there was no testing last spring because of COVID-19, and none of that data was.
But the last numbers I saw in every category, we were about one point below where we wanted to be. Was that the previous year?
That was this year, and we've done a report on that last year.
That is true, and we have put some things in place. That was one of the reasons we chose that ACT Online Prep. Another thing that we responded to those scores with was the Reading Plus program. Because we feel like, and we know professionally, we know, once you raise the reading level of all students, their performance across the board is going to improve. The ACT is basically a reading test, even though they're doing math and science and, you know, social studies, they're still reading. And so, we expect to see some improvement.
Another question. Didn't the state legislature redig on their promise to pay for all juniors? So, are we going to ask the students to pay for it this year?
No, the state's going to provide money for this year. What they didn't do was for those juniors last year who were supposed to get a free ACT, they're not going to pay for that.
They basically reallocated the money for their funds.
Because of the epidemic, I mean, or the pandemic, I'm sure they had other places to use that, so, yes.
We haven't had a lot of requests for that because colleges will waive that because of the pandemic.
Yeah, seniors, kids who graduated last year, depending on school they went to, most schools didn't hold them accountable for that because they weren't able to take it. And it wasn't just our junior testing. National tests were shut down as well for a good portion of time, so.
It went on grade level, GPA, that kind of thing.
Yes.
For college entrance.
Did they need to take it now? Since they didn't need to take it last year?
No, the state waived all of those requirements for the juniors of last year. So, even though the seniors of this year haven't taken that ACT, the state's not going to require them to do that.
So how will they do admissions?
They may need to take a national test for college admission, but I think that colleges are going to, I mean, it depends on what happens this year, I think.
That's the understanding that they will wait next year too because the seniors won't have the opportunity to take it.
I mean, we just don't know how it's going to.
Are we offering it to the juniors this year?
We're planning on it, but we don't do that until April, so. We were supposed to take the free ACT 8, 9, and we were unable to just because of the number of absences and difficulty we had covering staff so that they could administer the test. There were too many challenges, so hopefully we'll be able to do that later in the year.
Betsy, what week was that scheduled? Remind me.
Last week was September.
So, two weeks after Labor Day, I mean, we hit big time.
We did, we had that dip.
And I'm going to talk about that in our COVID update, and we have a lot of kids on quarantine and a lot of staff out as well.
They are offering us real flexibility with testing so far this year in terms of the window of testing time. So, we can test anytime this school year. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that later.
Now's a good time. We've got lots of kids back. Is that with the eighth and ninth grade? They said it's with your driver's test if you don't have.
Well, so, last year, the eighth grader should have taken their eighth grader reading test, that Oklahoma test, and they weren't able to. So, this pre-ACT 9 that they took, that they were supposed to take as ninth graders, they can use that for their driver's license test because they have to be certified from the school. They have to sign a little waiver saying this student has been qualified for their reading to get their driver's license. So that's one of the things they could use it for. We can also use, if we don't, if we're not able to get that test in this year, there are other things that we can use, but it's just nice to have that one test form be done. But there are other ways to help them.
Anybody else have any questions? Thanks, Betsy. Next is the superintendent's report with potential board discussion on the new revised board policies.
Kay, you know, we're a month behind on our board policies, and we present and accept public comment. Betty's going to have that posted on our website out there tonight and post the proposed changes to board policies. Some of these are required by law and some of those are optional. We didn't have as many as we typically did, but with the pandemic and all the protocols that were in place, we're a month behind. And we talked to our attorneys, and they said that was absolutely fine, so we'll present tonight and then you'll consider for approval in November. So, each director is going to talk about the policies pertinent to their department. Up first is curriculum, so that will be Terry and Barbara. And you'll need the clicker to get your things on that.
Okay, so just. Okay, the one that pertains to me the most is the reading sufficiency testing procedures. That is affecting one line in our current policy. And the current line talks about all the skills that are tested for RSA, and it spells them out. Phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary. And the new wording just says something like phonical awareness and other skills needed to be a good reader. I mean, it just, it means the same thing. It just didn't spell out each specific skill now. So that's the only change to the RSA law at this point, the RSA policy.
Is that a law change or just?
Yes, that's a wire change.
So somehow, Betty, we need to identify which ones are by law.
Well, the ones that are required are by law, so we've got them sorted out, so these are required.
RSA is a law, so anytime there's a change of that, it's because they made an adjustment in the law.
The virtual and distance learning, you approved a policy in July, and that was more specific to Pocahontas City, and then the state came up with a different policy. And so, Terry and I went through that policy and we amended it. So it is a little broader now with attendance, with grading. In our, in this original policy, it had things like lesson plans, which our teachers for distance learning do provide lesson plans, but for virtual, they do not because it is a program within itself. So those, we've made some adjustments with that. So those are the biggest changes with that policy.
And the SDE required some specifics. The State Department of Education, not our policy writers, in regard to accreditation that we had to upload that had to be specific to our distance learning policy. So that's why we had to change it because they came out with some new guidance after it was already up there since July.
Any questions? The next one is.
And this is an optional?
Nope. Chronic absenteeism. The state, year before last, we have on our report card, we have a grade for chronic absenteeism. Those are kids that are absent more than 10% of the school year. And that changes according to the number of days we have in that particular school year. The first year, the state, we had to submit evidence to the state that we did have a student that had medical issues, which could have been, you know, surgery, or diabetes, or asthma, or depression, or something like that that caused them to be absent from school more than 10% of the time. And I think the state decided that they were overwhelmed with those applications, so they put that responsibility back to the districts. So, we did not do this last year because we didn't have a report card. But this year, our principals will determine which students at their sites had medical issues that caused them to be absent from school and absent 10% of the school year. We will have a committee that will look at those, that information presented to us by each individual principal. We will make a recommendation to the board whether those students should be deemed as chronically absent. And if so, then they don't count against our report card for attendance. And then we will bring us names to you all, and you all will have to either agree with our decision of the committee or disagree. So that's the change there. Any questions?
Will there be a doctor's form or something? I mean, I hate for the board to have to decide, play doctor, whether it was a legitimate.
The state will give us, will give us specific guidelines. We looked for that last, early last spring before COVID, and they still did not develop that checklist. But they will give us specifics. And yes, we'll have to have medical documentation from the doctors stating that, you know, this child's health-related issues were such that could have caused them to be absent 10% of the time.
Well, I guess I'm still confused that if a doctor says the student was medically ineligible to go to school, I can't see how the board would fit over a rule of medical professional first.
Well, and you would just take that, you would just take that recommendation that from the committee that yes, the student is, should be considered chronically absent, I mean, not chronically absent due to medical conditions.
So the SDE requires the board to do this?
Yes. The first year, they did it, and they found out that it was, it was an overwhelming task. So they put it back to the district to make those decisions.
Well, we won't be able to share information because of HIPAA guidelines that we would just, this would just.
You may have like a student ID number instead of a name so that you know that, or that we know who that student is, but it's not our, no one else would know that.
And we wouldn't bring it to you without the appropriate criteria developed by the SDE.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one.
Yes.
How are they doing with the way we're teaching them?
With virtual or distance?
All of it.
Distance? At first, we have some teachers who are well-prepared, who are well-prepared from the start to teach from their classroom or from their home. We have some that it was a struggle, but I think we're pretty much there. Our distance learning practice days have helped them that, so they can record a lesson, post it to their Google Classroom. All the students from pre-K on high. Now they have to access that Google Classroom and either listen to or record lessons with their teacher or complete an assignment that's posted to Google Classroom. Virtual, you know, we've done virtual for a long time as Wildcat Academy. So we're using the same program for secondary students, elementary. We are using Accelerate, which is a program through the Edutiny company. We, it's been, we've had some really successful cases, and we've had some that aren't very successful because it takes discipline from the students, it takes some support from the parents, especially for your kindergarten, first, second, third year, third graders. You know, almost six of them stick with them, just like you would in a classroom. You would never put your, you know, your child at that age on a computer or a Chromebook or iPad or whatever and have them be in charge of their learning. So that's been a big struggle for our kindergarten, first, second, third. For our secondary, it's been more disciplined with time. Even though we tell them they need to work four and a half, five hours a day, that doesn't always happen because the parents aren't monitoring that. They're not helping with that. Even though we've asked them to, we've given them suggestions on how to help monitor for children, that doesn't always happen. But the majority of our kids are being successful with our virtual program.
Barbara, talk to them about where we are right now after finishing the quarter. It's going to be hard for a secondary student to come in at this point.
Yeah, it is. It's going to be very difficult, and we're going to, we do have a test that we can give our students, and we're going to give our very first ones for our middle school students tomorrow. With the Edutiny, they have to start and do the whole program. It's just like they started August the 24th. So even though they're nine weeks into this, we have no way to back that program up to say, okay, they've already done nine weeks of school. They should do the rest of the nine weeks. We can't do that, so we're giving them a test. And so they'll only have to cover the information they don't know. Accelerate, which is the elementary program, they can go in and put them in at week five, or six, or nine, or 10, and go along with those modules, but we're not able to do that in the secondary.
We were told, I may be wrong, but I was thinking like at the 14-day mark, you'd be monitoring the Edutiny kids and determining whether they have, they should go back, whether they're flunking, whether they need to go back to break and mortar or what.
Every Monday.
Have you had to turn some back?
Every Monday, I do that in the secondary, and I look at their progress. And if they aren't completing at least 40 assignments per week, they're not going to finish the course.
How many have you had to tell you're not going to buy them?
Probably, oh, between 15 and 20.
They go on probation for a week, and that will sometimes spur some on.
Yes, sometimes it does, yes.
Sometimes it doesn't.
And we conference again with the parents on how to monitor, to go in every night and look at the students' percent complete and record those so they know that, yes, my child did work today, or no, they didn't. We can, on this program, I can tell you which subjects they worked on, how many minutes. If they did nothing but let their computer run, it records idle time. So we can share that with the parents. The parents get an email every Monday morning that gives their child's grades, the amount of assignments that they've completed, their percent complete for the course, and so, and then we have teachers at contact every week.
So you're saying 80 to 90% are waiting?
Yes.
And I call every Thursday and Friday out on the elementary that are on probation.
We've had more voluntary go back from elementary, go back to traditional because it is really rigorous, and they need someone with them, and parents did not realize the responsibility and the commitment, and they've come back in to traditional learning. And in fact, we are moving a teacher from elementary virtual back to traditional, back to her home site the Tuesday after Fall Break.
But again, it has been successful for, for the majority of our students.
At this point, the ones that are in are doing well because we've just finished.
So you still have a waiting list?
At the secondary.
But what Barbara just said is, at this point, it's almost impossible for secondary to do.
So if they don't pass that test, you tell them, no, you can't do this.
No, we, we, we'll talk with the parents to say, this is, this is the percent of the course that they're going to have to complete. And then we'll let the parents know before we switch them to virtual.
Okay, so if that child's only at 50%, they know they have to catch up 50 when they go.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, at secondary, it starts affecting your credits.
Yeah, at the high school, yeah. We won't have any after this week, we won't have any on the middle school waiting list. Our biggest list is at the high school.
So on that teacher who decided to go back to her classroom, is it because you had enough that went back to fill it?
Yes.
Classroom. Okay, but are they at different schools?
No, well, this, this teacher is going back to her own classroom at Liberty in a second grade. And across the board in second grade, we had nowhere to go with second graders because we pulled six teachers to go to Pocahontas City virtual. And we needed to support the need in the traditional classroom. And they knew that going in that, you know, we could adjust, and we may adjust again at midterm. It just depends on our rate of students who stay in.
Second grade.
We're actually glad that they're back in our traditional. Very few have left the district to go with like another online charter or something, virtual charter.
Yeah, but it does surprise me, you know, when you were talking about the kindergarten, first, second, and third having trouble.
Yeah, it is.
I just felt like teaching second grade all those years, I just couldn't imagine.
I think our parents kind of thought it might be like the packets, the thinking skills, and the practice, and it's certainly not.
And we did tell them that upfront. We told them it was going to take time and it's going to need someone working with them and monitoring them along with us. We could not be there to monitor that home, so they were told that. But I still think many, as Shelley said, believed that it was going to happen.
So these high schoolers on a waiting list, I assume they'll be told that they have to go back to day one and start all over?
Yes.
They've got to do two nine weeks worth in one nine weeks.
Yes. Well, and that's, that's what we're going to, as we have staff available, we'll give them the option to take the test as well. And it takes about, for high school kids, it'll take about an hour per subject for them to take that test. And then we'll have to go in and modify the course, take out some of our hides, some of the activities that they don't need, that they've already demonstrated proficiency with. So it's going to take some time on our parts to go in and customize those for each of the students. We can't actually customize the course. We just have to hide activities that they, they don't need. They've already demonstrated proficiency.
Something that's interesting to me a lot with our high school people, they will get on the list if they've been quarantined and then when Barbara gives them a call, they'll say they're no longer interested or something to that effect. The child doesn't want to do it, the child wants to stay in traditional school. Not so much with middle school and elementary?
No, but more so in my digital. Any other questions?
How many do we have in virtual now?
434, I believe.
434 and what do we start with?
Way over 500.
Okay.
540.
I thought it was six something.
So about 100s come back.
Yes, and the majority, I think the majority have returned to our, our brick and mortar. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, I think it's Curtis.
Okay, our first one, our first ones, they're kind of lumped together and I'll kind of explain it together because they're a policy that says information. The first one is a modification to our alcohol and blood testing for bus drivers. Basically stating that we are going to use the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration Clearing House to clear them before they're allowed to drive a bus. What we'll have to do is we'll have to create consent forms for our drivers and we'll have to do an annual check to make sure they are, have not basically had any duress or have not refused any correct tests. And this can go back to previous employers as well. And then the second policy is compliance, it tells you how to comply with the F N's C S A clearinghouse. And like I said, mainly what we're going to do for our current drivers is we will run a query. And if that query comes back, then they're going to be good for another year and we'll do this on an annual basis. Starting January the 6th, any new C D L person that we bring in will have to clear the clearinghouse on a full, not just a, a full pro before we can hire them on the drive. So it's going to make another big hurdle for, I mean, the, the hurdle is going to be time. It's just waiting for them to clear the house, to clear these drivers so that we can bring them on. So we're going to be kind of shackled by their speed and how quick we can bring people on. So it won't be a big deal for our drivers right now, it's just going to be something you have to update through their, and it's something that's going to stay alive. Questions with those two?
And these are required by law.
These are required, yeah, all of our parts are required. The second set is our certified employee leave and this is, we're going to do this through a M O U since our certified leave is covered under a negotiated agreement. Talked to Zach, B A C T, they've already agreed to it for good reason. And it's basically saying that if we shut the school down and we just say we're done with school, we can't not pay our teachers or our certified people. So during any kind of pandemic or school closure, and then we say school is just closed, we have to pay out our contract. And so it also allows for the district, in the case of a closure, to require telework. Okay, and the next policy talks a little more specifically about telework. So this is basically a M O U stating that in the case of a pandemic, we're still going to pay our certified contracts. This one right here, this next one, which complies with state federal of our employee leaving payroll procedures. It's basically stating that we're going to adopt any additional leave that the federal government tells we're going to adopt. Kind of doing this in the arrears with the Family First Coronavirus Act where the federal government said you have 10 emergency sick days and there's an expansion of F A N L A. And this is basically a policy saying that if that happens in the future, we're going to adopt that leave. And we're going to also implement any newly granted leave, whether it be for the state or the federal government. So if they come out in January of 21 and they say we're going to allow employees that have 10 more emergency sick leaves, we've got a new policy that we're going to accept that and we're going to comply with those regulations. Any questions on those two? Leave under the Family First Corona, Corona Virus Response Act. Again, something that we've already done, but we're putting in our policy basically that we are revising the details for the emergency sick leave and the expansion of the F A N L A based on that act. Okay, the biggest change is that if, let's say we have a teacher who had this before, who lives in Stillwater and Stillwater goes, shuts down for a week, they have leave that can be applied to take care of their child during lead time quarantine and closure. So that's how it's going to affect us as much the most. Or like for example, when we, when Garfield, we shut down for two weeks, we had some parents, we had kids at Garfield, they could have taken that leave to care for their children during that leave, during that closure, okay? And when there's a quarantine or a closure that's, that's taken by the state or the county health department, they have, they can apply for that leave. That's really kind of the biggest change in that expansion of the F A N L A.
And we've had a few that have resisted or care for their own child, that the classroom's under quarantine.
And I'll tell you, we, this, we had a good conversation in our group, our H R consortium statewide and it's still kind of like the wild, wild west out there how this is being implemented. So it's good, good to see that this is kind of in place and we've been implementing it this way so it's not going to be changed for our people. And so, and also one of the things too is it does provide us the option for intermittent leave and that is at our discretion. So they don't have to take it all at the same time and that's really worth paying attention. Because you know, if we, one teacher gets quarantined and then two weeks later the kid gets quarantined, they need to be able to take that intermittent leave. This one talks more about telework during the school closure. And this is good policy because it kind of basically tells what our expectations are. If we do close and we do require telework, and we've required a lot of telework right now with our quarantines, with the teachers on quarantine, we require that and then to work with the college. These are the guidelines. It does give the superintendent the authority to allow telework, in other words, it's not a one size fits all. If your job discretion does not allow you to telework, then it's not a right that you have to telework. It is the sole expression of the superintendent to say, we're going to allow you to telework because you can still meet your essential job functions. Again, not entitlement, it's not appealable to the board, it's still the superintendent's decision whether that person can telework or not. If the employee is not able to telework due to job duties and the leave applies, or if they're sick, they're in the middle of a quarantine and they become ill, which has happened to us and they could not telework, they had to apply leave. And that's why some of the coronavirus leave came in. It kind of dictates in here that the superintendent determines where we telework. If we say we shut down the school, we want our teachers to come into the building, you know, the students aren't there. That gives the superintendent the right to tell them where telework happens. And then of course, employees must be available by phone or email during contract hours. They must attend any onsite or offsite meetings during contract hours. And all professional standards apply and codes of conduct apply during telework. So they can't be teleworking from a place that we wouldn't want schools to be teleworked from, so.
We're in their house code.
Yeah, 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 it's a dress code for the way stuff, so. But that, that just kind of puts a little bit of expectations on what telework looks like. And again, nothing, nothing else is going to be new for our people. They're doing, the ones who've had teleworking have been under the government. They've done what they're asked them to do and feel like it's the best situation for our kids during this time.
Was this a state law or federal law?
You know, I'm, I'm going to guess it probably needs state since it involves a school. The only thing that was, the federal was the federal Family First Coronavirus Act. And I think that this evolved from state level, but just kind of following that. The only thing I think that came down from the Fed was the coronavirus.
I mean, I don't have any problem with it, but some of those things don't look to me like a state legislature would approve some of those definitions for telework.
Well, and I'll be, I mean, I don't know if it came from the legislature, if it came down as a clarification for, because of.
Just to have a policy in place so that we knew what we were doing.
I'm sure that's not written by a policy writer or attorney versus the legislature.
Well, chances are that it has been because the legislature hasn't been in session since.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't been.
Closed, so I'm sure this is a policy that people, that's probably recommended by O S S B A or C O S A so that we do have some consistency of what telework is required. It really kind of lays telework up to the box, I mean, she gets to determine what that looks like.
That's the very thing that I don't think the state legislature would agree to.
Right, 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 that applies, that's some more strategic guidelines, but this kind of, this is kind of local control.
A C M P stalker could not telework, a teacher can telework, we have a secretary that can telework.
Oh, I'm not questioning what it's saying, I'm just saying that is not written by a legislature.
Oh, I agree.
That's, that's written by an attorney.
That's not, that's still attached to.
Criminal record searches, this is a new law that's coming into effect soon. And what we're doing right now covers both national and O S B I background checks. But what has been done previously may not cover national, I mean, previously probably, probably eight, 10 years ago, I don't know. But basically by that date right there, July 1, 2022, every teacher, every, every employee has to have an O S B I background check and a national background check on file. So what that means for us is we're going to have to go back in the personnel files of our active employees and make sure they have both of those in place by July 1st, 2022. What we do, I think, I'm sure when you were H R, covers both national and O S B I. So we know at least for the last eight, seven, seven or eight years, we're, we're caught up on that. That's just something that, the questions are going to, here's the question that are coming out is, okay, let's say 15% of our work staff has not had one or more of those checks, who gets to pay for that? Does the employee pay for it or does the district pay for it? As you can see, it's not in that law, so it's still kind of out there. It's kind of a question that we're asking as H R people, if I, who's responsible for that? So it's something we'll have to answer. Hopefully, if we've been trying to comply all the way through, we'll have to see who's responsible for that. But we have another, another year to have to be compliant with that. Supporting employees' rules of conduct, we had, there was a, added some discriminatory language in there that a person can be terminated for discriminatory conduct, can be suspended, demoted, terminated, or not re-employed. Also, the, the law that's already in place that a support person aged 21 or older may possess a gun in the school parking lot, but it must be legally stored in that vehicle, so. Questions on any of those? Those are all the required that we have. The one optional is about the service of legal papers and this is for like process server or something. We have the option of putting this in our policy that our employees can be served, are not available to be served from 7:30 to 4:30. And that way, if for some reason somebody has requested to be served during that time, they have to inform their administrator. Obviously, we, we're not going to feed anything that law enforcement is doing as far as warrants or anything like that, but it would allow us to say, okay, you can't serve these papers between these hours of operation. But the reasoning behind that is, as you can imagine, someone can serve, they usually want to bring them and they're basically not able to do what they need to do. So this allows us to say, if someone walks in, says they haven't looked at the courtesy plate and they've got these papers for them, we could say we find them 7:30 to 4:30. And that's an optional that we can add to it.
David, if you've got 25 kids in the classroom, teachers, and it happens quite a bit, I mean, you know, they're, they're pretty much in shock and we don't want our kids to suffer, so.
It, it has happened where someone's received something and they had to be dismissed or to get themselves. I mean, I wouldn't have been certain that I could get that. So this would be good for the school, I mean, you know, we just said we're not available to these timeframes and then.
But some people want to be served and then, then the policy allows for the principal to make arrangements like on their planning period or something have a process server come in.
Just takes a shot at it and what you might get during the survey. Okay.
Okay, then we're to Amy's. She's got one option policy. What is that one?
It is required and it's just a modification to the existing service animal policy. And it's adding definitions for service animals and training and service animal trainers to also be included in that policy. It added who that is, so it has to be someone affiliated with a training agency. I couldn't just decide that I would like to train a service animal and bring them on campus. So there is procedure and requirements outlined for that and where they can access, but it, it pretty much aligns with the existing policy of service animals just to include animals that are being trained.
That was an easy one.
Are they allowed on campus now, service animal?
Yes, that has to be a dog or a miniature horse.
A what?
A dog or a miniature horse. To find a service.
Miniature horse?
Carter can't catch his new little horse now. I can't do that.
Have you ever had a miniature horse?
We, we don't.
I don't think so.
We have a farm.
Interestingly, we've had this conversation when this thing started coming down in the major group and somebody there knew about the miniature horse. The reason the miniature horse horses are the dog is because of the lifespan of the horse. They put so much money into this training that they felt the miniature horse was a better investment because the lifespan of the horse was longer than the dog. And this person had a miniature horse, so if you had a miniature horse on that, that's, that's why I made that connection for the best reason.
There you go.
Those are the only type of two service animals we can have?
Yeah, those are the two, two defined service animals under A D A.
Okay, I can't remember who's next, maybe Ryan? Yes.
This one's a good one as well. This is a policy that was presented due to the cyber crimes being committed in school districts in and around the area. It's becoming more and more of a problem. What it is, is it's a kind of baseline. It's a lot of the things we were already doing in this, in this process, but this establishes a baseline that's above and beyond what we're already doing. But in the process, we'll, by following these guidelines, we'll have a better, be better prepared for this in case it happens again. We thought we were pretty well prepared the last time that it got hit, but. And the policy entails fair, just a few things as far as what we're required to do as far as keep our monitoring, how we report to the board, it includes a, reporting to the board once a year, it includes employee education, specifically focused on the ones that do handle P I I or student information data or payroll or personnel data. For them to be educated on what would consist of malware or ransomware, just information, helping them make the, make a decision or be aware of what's going on. It also includes some policies in regards to how we report an issue and what we do. Like for instance, this last time, when it happened to me, I called Barbara first, but the, like the policy, and then she called Shelley. Well, this particular policy indicates that I would contact Shelley directly to start the ball rolling when I, if we've discovered something like that. So it's just some things like that to establish a process to follow to make sure we are acting in accordance with everything else.
Strongly recommended, that's not required, but our policy writers do strongly recommend that one. And a lot of the recommendations were the process that we followed with the legal and the cybersecurity people and.
I assume this is probably written for the smaller districts that really don't have much of an IT department.
Correct.
A, a lot of it is, and like you say, a lot of that stuff's we had already done, but this puts it in a, in a written form. So I mean, we. but this puts it in a, in a written form, so that we, we can evaluate what we're doing based off of it. We know all our boxes are checked, and we're assured to make sure we're covering all our bases.
Next is Brett.
Emergency medical services for district athletic events and activities. This is the Riley Oakley Act, so it is something that's required per law. There was a young man, a middle school student football player that died during a football event back in 2019. And apparently wasn't enough services, medical services available, so that's probably why the dead man died. So they created this law that says that we are going to develop a plan with our local emergency providers on servicing events, athletic events. We pretty much do that anyway, we've got annual services and contracts. But we have a different plan per event and per site. I've already developed that, it still needs some tweaking, but we have a plan per site. I thought that everyone's going through, somebody at this point put the details in, but the law says we have to have a plan, and we've got that, so that's what this is basically about. Any questions there? And use of facilities. This one basically addresses the dangerous weapons possession of school property. Oklahoma law says that you can have a gun if you have a license to be on campus, but it has, you can't be a student, and it has to be in a car, and it has to be where you cannot see it. So basically, that has been, is telling us that if you're a non-student and you're 21 years of age, or a veteran and you're 18, then you can possess a firearm on school, park, on school campus, in a parking lot, in your vehicle, and in your own site. That was, this was along with Oklahoma law, right? They also took away the low-point beer possession, because there's no more low-point beer. 3.2 beer was, there's only two states, I believe, in the whole nation that had 3.2 beer, and I don't, I don't even know what the other state was, I think it's completely gone, so it's all alcohol beer, that's why they just took that out.
So you can have low-point.
You can't get it, so that's what our previous policy said, low-point beer. Yeah, I was like that, why would they take out low-point beer?
Well, does that mean you can have high-point beer on school property?
No, there's no alcohol, there's already in the policy, but they had this low-point beer stuck in there, so it's like it actually didn't make sense.
Okay, so, so the, the rule is no alcohol?
Correct. Different policy.
Said tobacco, alcohol, what about it? And what about that chew or whatever? That's out, that's tobacco, that's tobacco.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it's about.
Advertising in district media on district facilities. Basically, what this does, it just adds in that we're not going to allow marijuana dispensaries, growers, anything that's connected to the marijuana industry to be advertising school property. We already got all that, and we just added that in there, just clarifies. And the last one is a smoking, vaping, tobacco products. This is optional, but we're going to go ahead and ask you to accept it. T said the tobacco settlement is, gives us the opportunity to get grades. And in order to get those, qualify for those grants, you have to have policies that they like. We have a policy already that they like, but they keep adding to it each year. This one, they, they said it's optional, it just, what it basically does is it adds more to the descriptions, like what is a tobacco-free campus? So we've got a description in there of what that, what that is, a definition, so to speak, instead of a description. And then that anytime we have an issue with tobacco with a student or an employee, we're going to make sure that they get the helpline phone number so they can get tobacco sensation if they, if they want to, if we need to supply it to them. And students need to make sure that they're annually trained, that this is bad for you, and we make sure that they know all that. And that's kind of it in a nutshell.
What's a penalty for drug use chewing and getting vaccinated?
Well, that's also in this, and it, or they are discipline policy that we currently have for employees. If they don't abide by the rules, then the discipline applies.
Can be a number of things, review question and admonishment.
Get a warning, there's, there's steps.
Up to suspension.
Any questions?
Okay, so I've got a couple that are required, and one that is optional. And these were set out in response to the pandemic. The first one is the emergency preparedness and management. It's required since the pandemic came up, really, we didn't have a board policy on pandemics or other emergencies like a tornado, fire, the flood that we had across the street. Basically, it talks about the communication procedures. If we go into closure, that the superintendent can name a committee. For example, I would have Jeff make sure that our students were fed in the event of a closure, transportation, safety, communication to our public, address general health, and then it goes into pandemic procedures, like developing protocols for safety and outlining the items that can mitigate the spread of the pandemic. And basically, the one thing that's in there that you might have questions on is the decision-making, and it came from RFR, just that the superintendent can close a school up to five days, notify the board unless it's a pandemic. You all outlined that last month, I believe, when we talked about our safety protocols, gave me the authority to visit with you all about closing a school, but it would take board approval to close the entire district. And this just says basically that I could make that decision, or the superintendent can make that decision for five days, and then it would have to go to the board.
Is that for school or for the total?
For the entire district. Well, it could be for a school, it could be for a school.
But is it for the, could you close it for five days for the whole thing?
That would, for anything but a pandemic. A tornado, yes, but the board would be kept informed.
So that's a change in our policy, or we wrote it?
No, your policy still stands. It's just in regard to district closure as far as.
Non-pandemic.
Correct. And it addresses some of the protocols with the pandemic, which we already had outlined in depth before this policy even came about. And this is a required change, student records, it's required due to House Bill 2905. It requires us to transmit within three days to a virtual charter that student's records, three days after receiving the notice. This was the only thing that was added to that policy. We already practiced that anyway, so, but according to the law, we now have to, so we're just adding that we have to submit student's records within three days. The optional policy that I'm going to discuss is board meetings held video, via video conference or teleconference. And this is in effect through November 15th, and by the time you are voting on these, it'll be close to November 15th, or until the governor declares the state of emergency for COVID-19 is terminated. And at this point, with our rates in Oklahoma, I don't see that happening before November 15th, so this is a policy that we'll put in place in regarding to being able to hold our board meetings via teleconference. And we haven't done that in quite some time, and you all know the rules on that, you have to be visible, you have to be able, audio, so they roll call and vote, and it just puts the policy in place. So if we want to adopt that in November, that's certainly an option. We may not need to, but my guess is we probably will, I doubt. I, I, I would imagine you would extend the state of emergency. Any questions on those three policies? Okay, oh, this one, this is another one. We have a board policy 7.2 student handbooks. And all it says, there's one sentence in this policy, and it says the board must approve all student handbooks. And I would propose that we eliminate this policy and just bring changes to the curriculum committee, major changes. Those handbooks are anywhere from 80 to 100 pages, and we have 13 sites. So we've had our principals come and talk to curriculum committees if they're wanting to change or thinking about changing some policies in our handbook, and that's what I would propose that we do, unless you want to read all those handbooks. But that is currently in our policy, so we either need to have you read the handbooks or eliminate that policy. Okay? All right, any questions about any of the policies?
If we want to discuss, talk about, disagree, whether, do you want us to come to you or go to the individual person?
In regard to policies?
To any of these. I mean, if I, if I don't like what Brett's doing, or Curtis, or Amy or somebody, you'll go, go through you, or you want us to?
Either way.
Board members probably have a red all these.
Either way, we, our superintendent cabinet meets every Monday in any of our.
I mean, we've got months to decide what we want to do.
And we could do it in committee next time, too.
Yeah, it's up to you, how do you want us to, I mean, I've got two or three questions, a couple of them.
I'd say first go to the director, and then we can discuss it in superintendent's cabinet, and then we'll discuss overarching policies in our next committee meetings. And they should be ironed out, ready to go for the November board meeting. Okay, and we'll give you a little bit of a COVID update. As you likely know, our alert system for K County went down. We went from orange two at 32.5, we went to 22.6, orange one, which is moderate risk. It was our first decrease in the K County COVID alert system since, I believe it was August 8th. So almost two full months, it seems like we continually increased, so that was good news. We knew it was going to go down because we kind of tracked the days we'd had single new cases days every day but one, and one day was pretty significant, so we went down. And I will tell you that our in-school cases directly correlate to that COVID alert system. So the higher those, the more issues we have. And last week, we had surprisingly good week, which I'll talk to you a little bit about. Here's some COVID-19 good news, and sometimes it just kind of goes in highs and lows. And so we, we went down in our risk level. And as you know, and I'm not sure if everyone knows, but the state has its own COVID alert system, and what we follow are the SDE numbers, the SDE, the State Department of Education recommendation. So the state doesn't even have a red level, the Oklahoma State Department of Health. And, but according to the State Department of Health, we're all orange. There's a couple of yellow counties, and if you refer to the Harvard positivity rate, Oklahoma's mostly red. So it just depends on what, what map you're looking at, but schools correlate to the State Department of Education protocol. As I mentioned, last week, we only had one in-school positive, and that was on a Sunday, and it was a significant positive, it affected 85 kids because the positive case was involved in two activities, and it's all dependent on the activities, or if they ride a bus, they're definitely situational. We had no weekend positives this last weekend, and that was the first time in four or five weeks. I can't remember, it was fabulous. And today, we had lots of returning students, we had Garfield return, all of Garfield. We had one full class at Liberty return, we had a class at Washington Pre-K return, we had about 80 kids at West Middle School return, and we had about 100 kids at Poe High return. So our rate of close contacts went down by half today, lots of kids returned. And I say we had no in-school positives today, but we did have one. And actually, it was, it was an individual who doesn't interact much with students, and this individual was preparing for a surgery, and now when you prepare for surgery, you have to have a COVID test. This individual had not been experiencing any symptoms and did not affect any close contacts, so I had prepared this before I knew that. So we've had a good start to the week for the COVID-19 alert system. We had a seven, a two, and a two, for a total of 11 in three days. So if we can keep that up, I feel confident our alert system will go back to yellow. It will almost be impossible to go to the green level, which is called the new normal, because it has to be 1.43 or less per day. And I just mentioned that our risk level definitely correlates to our in-school activities. And here's our contact tracing totals as of today, by end of day today. And you can kind of check those totals out. If you, the very last column, Mr. Layton added that column, for non-quarantine students on distance learning due to a site or partial closure. And we had about 160 Garfield students on that last, well, about 150, because there was one class that was quarantined at Garfield. And Poe High, if you look at the third yellow bar to the right, that's our student, that's our total cases. We've got 104 close contacts in effect, and probably 85 to 90 of those were from our last weekend close contact, and only one staff member. East, very minimal. I don't think they have had a big closure yet, except with one activity. So East has pretty much been off the hook. West are just some one-off close contacts, maybe from family members, or they went to a birthday party or whatever. We still have a class out at Roosevelt, and they're out, they will come back the Tuesday after fall break. And other than that, our numbers are pretty low everywhere except the high school, and then we have one class out at Garfield, and most of those others are connected to home positives. So you can see the percentages are still really low, and that was updated today. Now, if you want to see site percentages, that tells you the number of students and staff out. The greatest number is at the high school, we have 8% of our students, 8.42% of our students out in quarantine, and 1.43% of our staff, and then it just goes down from there. Roosevelt's next with 686, so really, really small proportionate in regard to our total staff numbers and our total enrollment numbers. Seems like a lot of kids, but comparatively, it's not a very high percentage. So here's our positive days versus our no positive days. I did correct the, the positive day today on the 12th. So we've completed 35 days of school, and I believe we're 18 days with no positives and 17 days with positives. But on 9/7, you can see I have it yellowed out, that was Labor Day. Look exactly two weeks past that on 9/21, we had six days of straight positives. And when we first came into school, it was no, 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 and then we hit yes, and then it's no, 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 and then we hit yes. And anytime there's a holiday, people get together, visit people from other communities, and I would imagine that's going to happen after fall break. So we have fall break coming up, and we hope we can keep our numbers low, and then we'll expect it to go back up after, after fall break, but we hope not. So we're encouraging people to mitigate while they're not in school as well. This is our trend data, which I've not shown this to you before. Curtis prepares this every Friday, and you can see that first week we were in school, we had a little over 1%, and then it's just gone up every week. We dropped a little from 9:25 to 10:02, and then we dropped again last Friday. And unless we have a terrible week, I think we're going to go down again. So we'll be on a downhill slope, we hope. But that 9:25 week was the, the week right after, two weeks after Labor Day. Some of the schools are, well, universities, I wouldn't say public schools, universities are going all online between Thanksgiving and Christmas just because of the travel, and they, they see these same trends that we do. Someone asked that on our Facebook page, and I usually answer questions, but I didn't even touch that one, so. I don't think that's anything that we could, would consider unless we couldn't keep our buildings open. But Mr. Layton and I were talking today, we wouldn't, we didn't think we'd make it this long. And it's up and down and up and down, just when you about give up hope, you have some good days, so. This last week was a really good week. Okay, then I track our peer school comparisons, and I've done this every board meeting. I, I track Park City, Bartlesville, Ena, Stillwater. And you can see that we were the. And you can see that we were the last city who started going into the orange levels. And it's hard to tell between the orange level one and orange level two. It's just a, a shade difference. But we have gone up every week since September tenth, and we went down this last week into the orange level one. Bartlesville went up quicker than we did, and then they went down, they went up, and then they've been back down. And then I noticed that they've had some really high days lately. So I'm not sure what's going to happen at the end of the week for them. Enan has stayed pretty much on the orange level two. They had gone down, back into the thirties, and then they almost hit their target of fifty. And their board policy doesn't say when deemed appropriate. They go to fifty, they go to A-B schedule, and they stop activities. So Stillwater, they hit that fifty mark. They were full distance learning, and their board policy does not say when deemed appropriate. So right now, they're still in orange level two by half a point, and they're on A-B schedule at Stillwater. So I'm sure they're hoping to get back into the yellow level so that they can come back to school. They haven't been in school full time since school started, so... There's how we can compare. And then I just put the current safety protocols up there. This was the, the new protocols that you adopted on nine fourteen. They're not new protocols, it's just that if we go into the red level, then it's upon board approval. When deemed appropriate, but board has to approve the instructional delivery if we get to the red level for all school. Same thing with activities down at the bottom. Building and campuses not available for public use or extracurricular upon board approval. So I didn't know if you might want to think about that in the future, changing anything. Right now, I think we're holding our own as far as school-wide spread, and I think that's because of our strict protocols. And it doesn't make a lot of people happy, but I will tell you, we get a lot of positive support. It's, we get emails, phone calls every day, how they appreciate that we're mitigating and trying to keep our kids in school. But those who aren't happy with the quarantine are certainly really loud, so... Any questions in regard to our protocols or where we are? But I think we're holding our own and doing a good job mitigating, so... Okay, questions, comments, discussion? Everybody's good? Okay.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes tonight's agenda, minutes from the last board meeting, and contracts under ten thousand dollars. I wrote a few notes down on those. Brett is asking for money to print two thousand copies of the PCPS emergency procedures. This will last three or four years. Every employee does get a copy. We have maintenance with American Telephone for our annual phone system. East and West, some educational software. Five-year contract for pre-AP English, English two, and pre-AP geometry with college board. An online statistics course. Oh, personnel and equipment from Enduro Group. This is for a cross-country track meet. Thousand dollars. We looked at buying the equipment, but it actually, no more track meets than we have. Comes out better, just go ahead and lease it from these people. Great minds training for some St. Mary's employees. We received government funding for the virtual training for the St. Mary's employees. Some special ed software, Randy has asked for it for both West and Poe High. Thousand dollars for the wrestling takedown club to clean up the solid stain after football games. Jeff needs some refrigeration equipment repaired for child nutrition. We bought batteries for radio. We spent about four thousand on top dress, put some sand in the overseed, the baseball field. Contract date changed for white box training. And then there were a couple of royalty payments for about a hundred dollars. So unless anyone has any question on any of those items, I would look for a motion to approve items one, two, and three under number six, the consent agenda. I'm going to accept it. We have a motion from David and a second from Judy. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jim.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Motion carries, number seven, action item. Consider and take action on the following district reports. These are primarily the encircers' reports, with various plans, change order, budget analysis, bond fund, sanction request, activity funds, ratification approval of payrolls that Curtis always wants. Don and I talked about all these in the finance committee. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve item seven in its entirety.
I motion to approve.
Sure. Pay through hell, Jim. I have a motion from David.
I have a ready for you in a second.
David for Nancy.
Yeah, I'll say it.
Call for the vote.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Item two, consider and take action on the resolution. This is by law or requirement to inform the K County Election Board of the annual upcoming Ward One election, which I believe will either be February or April, depending on how many people file for it. It's a standard procedure. We have to abide by December, early December, the K County Election Board. And with that, I'd call, ask for a motion to approve item two, to inform the K County Election Board.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve item two.
Motion. Motion from Judy and a second from David. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Motion carries, number three. Consider and take action on Ponca City Public Schools District's side improvement plans. And Terry will discuss. Have any questions on it? Other than, they were hard to read, right, Judy?
It's very difficult to read.
Maybe it's going to get, they were, I looked at them, so Judy obviously. So it was hard to read online. No questions for Terry. With that, I'd call for a motion to approve the side improvement plans.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Judy, second from Nancy. Call for the vote, Jim.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Motion carries, number four. Consider and take action on revisions to board policy. Five point one procurement plan for child nutrition.
This one is one that we have to have in place, so Jeff is going to talk to you about it. We didn't discuss it for public comments tonight.
Thank you. Probably the first question you're going to ask is why are we doing this? And after all these years. About two years ago, the State Department of Education Child Nutrition contracted with an outside source to do the procurement, and that's the purchasing part of our review. Last year, we received a review, it was really good. And then we started working with this company. Now, this company's never bought a grain of rice in their life, so they're really experts on this. So about ten years ago, we joined, we, myself, the director at Edmund, the director of Stillwater formed a buying group. And we started with three schools, five million. We're at thirty-seven schools, forty-seven of them is what we buy. So we get a very large discount. The majority of all of this language was within the buying group, and ninety percent of the language that we've asked, been asked to put in here was in the district purchasing. But the company said it needed to be under five point one-one, the child nutrition purchase. So not only is it there, it's in our district, but it needs to be under ours. So there's three items that they had us put under there. The first one says the School Food Authority will assure that small minority and women, business enterprises, and labor surplus firms are used when possible. This was in our big bid, this was in some language like this in our district, but wasn't under ours. Honestly, we never asked, but if we are told, then we are giving preference. So that, that's in there. The second thing covered what they called, it says endeavor to equitably spread among all qualified sources if available, we're procuring a micro method. Now, to the USDA, a micro is under two hundred and fifty thousand. So to me, that's not micro, but that's a micro purchase. So it just sets out the guidelines of how we do those purchases. And so, for instance, a little bit, you're going to approve the milk. That is under two hundred and fifty thousand. How do we procure that? And it just goes through those, those methods which we were using already, and which was already outlined in our district policy. And then it just says that the acquisition of supplies and services and the aggregate, which needs for the entire carrier, that would be through that, through the micro purchasing, just spells out what a micro purchase is. That's all it is. And then it talks about us being a part of a cooperative, because the majority of things that we purchase in child nutrition is through the, the buyer, the purchasing cooperative. Edmund Public Schools is the lead agents, and so we piggyback on them, all these schools do. And they do the bidding process, and they have the standards of bidding. And I usually participate in that. I haven't the last two years, but I usually go down through the bid opening, and then a company bids on, and in this case, this foods gets that bid. Now, all companies, it goes through, they make huge, huge, letting you attest, insurance, everything that we would normally advertise and ask for. It goes through that, and then the buying group makes the decision. Fortunately, or unfortunately for us, we've always just had one company, and that is willing to take on all these schools. Now, keep in mind that a lot of these schools are like Alba, some really small districts. We've allowed them to piggyback, and they get the same pricing that we get in Ponca City. So, I mean, that's, that's great for those programs, and that's why I established that, because they were going under, because they couldn't afford by faith. So this really helped. And so that just goes through that process of how that's going. It just needed to be spelled out in our, under, under five point one-one. We sent this to them, and they said it was adequate, the board would approve it. And so we wore that out, I think we did, trying to get the language in there that, that the accounting firm agreed with. And we finally did get what they want. I finally said, what do you want? And she told me, so I did. That's a long explanation for something real simple, but that's why we're doing this now instead of years ago.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd ask for a motion to approve this change in policy to five point one-one.
I believe we did it.
Motion from David.
On second.
Second from Judy. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, Shelley's going to tell us a little bit about some recognition of the following events in American Education Week, National Education Support Personnel Day, National Native American Heritage Month, and Celebrate Freedom Week.
Sure, these are some great activities that we recognize in October and November. American Heritage, American Education Week is basically just an emphasis on public education and the accomplishments that public ed have made and the needs that public ed still have to make awareness of those needs and how many students are affected by public ed. So it's just a time to recognize all of our staff, our administrators, our board members, and our volunteers. National Education Support Personnel Day coincides with American Education Week, and that's just a time that we honor our support employees. We have three hundred and fifty-two support employees, not only that work in the classrooms with students, but we have transportation, maintenance, child nutrition, that we could not make it without our support employees. And we go all out for Support Employee Week. And then we have National Native American Heritage Month, and that's a time to celebrate and recognize tribal, cultural awareness, heritage, history, art, and traditions of the American Indians, the Alaskan natives, and Native Hawaiians. And we have Title VI people who work in our district, and they work under Chris Littlecook, and they really focus on National Native American Heritage Month. And, and speaking of National Native American Heritage Month, we have a great relationship with Project Eagle at the Ponca Tribe. And we meet with them every two weeks via Zoom to ensure support for Native American students who are PCBA, Ponca City Virtual Academy. So there's a good group out there that work with us, and we've got a good collaboration going with the Ponca Tribe. Celebrate Freedom League, it coincides with Veterans Day, and it's just to help our students become more educated on the sacrifices that our military and American heroes have made for our country's freedom and the values for which we're founded on. So those are the four events.
With that, I would look for a motion just that the board recognizes the value of these four individual activities these weeks, these special events, and we'll look for a motion to approve that.
I'll motion.
Go ahead, Nancy. Nancy, a second from David. Call for the vote.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Motion carries, number six. Consider and take action on, briefly explain these, and then we'll call for one vote on the agreement with BSN Sport, the backstop, backstop netting of the baseball field. This is eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. Basically, the backstop was worn out. I talked to an individual who tried to repair it, and it was just deteriorating the more he tried to sew it together. So this is an agreement before the baseball season to put a new backstop in behind the home plate to the first and third base area. An agreement with Catacalt Learning for virtual coaching in St. Mary's Catholic School. We are given again government funding to cover this cost. Then the final one is an agreement with Highland Dairy Food Products. Hundred and seventy thousand dollars sounded like a lot of money to me, but it was bid, and there was only one bidder. So obviously, there's a lot of milk going to the students of Ponca City Public Schools. So with that, I would look for a motion to approve A, B, and C, all three items that you just discussed.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
I guess Terry. How come we're paying for St. Mary's? Is it with title money?
They get a portion of the Title I and Title II.
Okay, so it's title money?
Yes.
Okay.
It's required.
It comes to us.
Yeah, I know, you know, I just wanted to make sure it was part of mine.
Okay. I have a question. A motion from David and a second from Nancy. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Motion carries, number seven. Motion to vote to convene to executive session for the following purposes. Discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on attached detail personnel report. Discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property. Discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation. It's my understanding that we do need executive session. So I'd look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion from Nancy. A second from David.
Correct.
Call for the vote.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
As carries, we are in executive session, we do the end.
Yes.
Return to open session. Recital with the board president is minutes of executive session. Or kept by the board minutes clerk, or remain confidential. Consider, take action on recommendations for termination, reassignments, resignations, and employment of personnel that we just talked about. Do I have a motion for that?
I motion.
I have a motion from David and a second from Nancy. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Motion carries, any new business?
No new business.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Need to adjourn.
Motion from David and a second.
I think.
Second from Judy. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are...
Thank you, guys.